I cannot believe another year is gone. Sorry, that's on me. This is the planning and zoning meeting for the city of Smyrna. It's 6:00 PM and this meeting is called to order. At this time, we'd like to ask that all electronic devices be turned off as they interfere with our recording equipment. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting is conducted much like a council meeting. As such, each application will include a presentation from city staff, followed by a question and answer session between staff and the board. Following staff's presentation, we'll have the applicant present their case and answer any questions. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We do ask that you come up one at a time, state your name and address for the record. If you would just sign your name on the sign-in sheet, you don't have to fill out all the information, it's just so that we get the correct spelling at the podium. If you would do that for us, it'd really help us all out. I think that's pretty much all the announcements. The first item on the agenda is 2018-34. This is zoning request Z18-015. This item is to be tabled to the January 14, 2019 meeting. Can I get a motion to table this item, please? I have a motion, Ms. Harrington, second, Mr. By. Waiting on somebody. That is approved 7-0. And if Earl's a little slow, he had another hole-in-one this week. Another one. Unbelievable. I'm sorry. I'm just envious.
He'll gloat.
Yeah, gloat all you want, my friend. Anyway, the next item on the agenda is 2018-511. This is zoning request Z18-019. This is rezoning from O&amp;I to TS conditional for the construction of a new hotel. This is a .99 acre lot at Land Lot 881, also known as 2875 Spring Hill Parkway. MCP, the Third Real Estate LLC is the applicant. Mr. Sudrith, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just jump right into this. It's right either approval or denial to go to council in January in their 22nd meeting. Here we have the land use plan. The property, as you can see on the screen, is highlighted in blue. It's accessed off of Spring Hill Parkway. Our future land use for not only this site, but also for this general areas we've talked about in past requests, as well as past studies, is Regional Activity Center. And that's also what Cobb County has for this area, on the Cobb portions of that greater Cumberland area. The proposed site plan here shows that it'll have one access point to the property. Outlined in red are the property lines. They are requesting some variances in their setbacks. Those are listed on the screen. This is the general footprint of the proposed hotel. Full access drive onto Spring Hill Parkway. This is where the proposed dumpster is. We do have some concerns about that, which I'll talk about in a moment. There are 28 parking spaces, which look like they are at ground level, but in essence, there's also a underground parking lot, so that in combination, you've got 28 spaces here and additional spaces in the parking deck. The access for that deck is shown here, that you would turn right, right after you enter the property. Here are the requested variances, of which staff is supportive. Yes, this is a small site, and yes, we are supporting some reductions in our setbacks and in some of the landscaping aspect, as well as a parking reduction. Staff is supportive. We've taken a look at the reduction numbers and given what we have researched, as well as our conversations with the applicant, we're convinced that the number of spaces that are proposed are adequate. I will say that the owners of this property and the applicants also own the adjacent Holiday Inn Express, and there will be a cross-parking easement between those two properties, so that they can share parking on the times that they may need that. There is an increase in building height from five to seven stories. Staff is supportive of this as well. The LCI Spring Road study, as well as the Georgia Tech study that we did, you know, two years ago, indicated that a higher density use for this general quadrant was preferred. Council agreed with that and accepted that, and that's one of the reasons our land use plan calls it as a regional activity center. So staff doesn't have any concerns about going from five stories to seven stories, nor does our fire department. They feel they can handle this as well. Now, the basement level of the parking deck, you can see, obviously, is all parking, the parking deck foundation. Again, the ramp to go up and down. There's 73 spaces, basically, in the basement. This is the proposed rendering. They have indicated that it is a Element Hotel, which is relatively speaking, a fairly new type of hotel to the market over the last several years. And again, this is just other elevations, whether it's the southern or northern side. Excuse me, or the eastern or western side. This is the subject property. And the adjacent properties, the top picture on the left is the Holiday Inn Express. The bottom picture is part of the old Emerson Center office development. Staff recommendation is for approval of this request. Not all of the standard conditions would be applicable in this case, and as such, we've listed the ones that are not applicable, as well as those that are. Then in terms of specific conditions, which mean they run with this property, we get into the waivers that have been requested from the setbacks, which would be a 31-foot front, a five-foot side, seven-foot rear. You know, the developer's responsible for any water and sewer issues that are deemed necessary, either by the city public works director or by the Cobb County Water System. Again, the developer's responsible for fire access improvements that may be deemed necessary by the fire department. I mentioned the dumpster. The issue with the dumpster is they would be backing out onto a public street there. We prefer that that not happen, and when I say "we," it's not just community development, it's the other departments, and in particular, the Public Works Department. So it needs to be relocated in another part of the property. Again, one access point from Spring Hill. Talk about the limits of disturbance there. They need to be in substantial compliance with the TS zoning district, which by the way, is across the street as well. And be bound to the elevations that have been submitted, with the exception, or with the understanding, that we're not talking about signage in this case. There's signage illustrated on the building. We're not just, we're not approving the signage per se, just because we're approving those particular elevations, that the signage is a separate issue. And then there is a stipulation letter that's in your packet, that we've included as condition 18, that the additional stipulations, which the applicant has already agreed to, shall also become part of this approval. And with that, I will just leave this proposed site plan up on the screen and happy to answer any questions.
All right. At this time, we'd like to open the floor for questions from the board. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Sudrith. We'd like to have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about the application. Good evening and welcome, Mr. Sams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you. Good evening.
Good to be seen.
And happy holidays to all. My name is Garvis Sams. I represent the applicant, which is also the property owner concerning this application for rezoning, and one of my clients of MCP is here tonight, and so at the appropriate time, we'll be able to respond to any questions or address any concerns. My name is Garvis Sams. I'm with the law firm of Sams, Lark, and Huff &amp; Bally. Mr. Sudrith, as usual, did a good job of seeing this up, so that you've got a good understanding of that, as your staff always does. I'd like to hand, I've got a handout I'd like to give to the clerk, so as I'm beginning my remarks, perhaps Mr. Martin can hand that out. Before I really get into the meat of the issues, that is, the property at issue, and it's important, really, that you understand who my client is. It's MCP. It's a wholly owned subsidiary of Buckhead America Hospitality. They do own the Express, Holiday Express Inn next door. They own, operate, manage, and for the long haul, with their hotels throughout the southeastern United States. And if you look at, I forget which page it is on the handout, you'll see some of the various hotels that they've done. And these are not speculators, they're not flippers. They're in for the long haul, as I said. Mr. DePon Patel, the CEO of MCP, has 30 years in the hospitality industry and a master's degree from Cornell. Mr. Chetan Patel, who is here tonight also, approximately 30 years in the hospitality industry, and he's the chief operating officer of Buckhead America Hospitality, or MCP. And together, the three primary partners or principals involved in MCP have over 70 years of combined experience. So these aren't just hoteliers, these are master degrees, advanced degrees in hotel management and hospitality. The property at issue, as Mr. Sudrith described, is a small piece. It's .99 acres, almost an acre tract of land. Right now, on it, there's an older office building, has some age on it. I wouldn't say it's functionally obsolete, but it's just not being utilized at the highest, and we think the best use for this property. The property is owned, O&amp;I Office and Institutional. It's within a regional activity center, both in Cobb County and in the city of Smyrna. And what we've done, even though the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county doesn't require any discourse or dialogue, one of the things we did early on, and I represent the staff, that I always do this, when we have direct contiguity or adjacency to the county property, is had discussions with Dana Johnson, who was the community development director, Mr. Sudrith's counterpart in Cobb County. Additionally, and maybe more importantly to you, you've seen, since this LCI study was adopted back in the spring of 2017, you have seen the actions that you have taken in terms of recommendation to the mayor and council, the action that's been taken by the staff in terms of the positioning of their relative recommendations, and then ultimately, the action taken by the mayor and council hasn't deviated, at least as far as I can tell, one iota from that LCI study, which speaks well, not just for the city, but also the planning that went into that, because it was tailor-made, we think, in order to accommodate this particular sub-area, which is a key sub-area, and one of four quadrants at the intersection, the confluence of I-285 and Cobb Parkway. The other quadrant is the Battery, SunTrust, or South Trust. One other quadrant on the south side is, of course, the Galleria Mixed Use Development. And then on the other side of Cobb Parkway is Cumberland Mall, and all the satellite commercial office and even multifamily components in hotels as a result of that. And of course, this particular quadrant, a preponderance of the properties are within, all of our properties in the city of Smyrna, but a preponderance of all the tracks on this quadrant are in the city of Smyrna, and I can promise you that your elected officials and your staff have reached a conclusion that this is a critical piece of property, and this sub-area is critical in terms of ultimately providing aerial pedestrian connectivity and linkage between the four quadrants of this intersection, and making certain that the livable center's initiative, LCI study, is complied with in order to forward those goals. It is a primary economic engine for the city, and it will become even a more dynamic primary economic engine as time goes on. We are asking for rezoning. O&amp;I allows office use, TS, or tourist services, allows for the use we seek, which is a seven-story hotel building, consistent with the plans that you have before you. So this is consistent with the LCI, it's consistent with the county and the city's future land use map, it's consistent with your comprehensive land use plan. Your staff has recommended approval of this. We have the support of Cobb County, not that they enter into the decision-making process. I've spoken with representatives of the CID, the town, excuse me, the Cumberland Galleria Community Improvement District, and they're delighted to have this come forward. You know, the CID is a self-taxing unit for infrastructure, and they'll be looking forward to this participating in. I don't know the exact rules as to whether a city, as opposed to an unincorporated county property, can be an active member of the CID, but I can promise you this meets in, or meets their long-term goals. The, I've told you about the geography of the area. What my client has been granted by Marriott/Westin is control, so to speak, over this sub-area, this geographical area, in terms of introducing a specific product that's geared toward millennial traveling public. Now, you probably are getting weary of hearing things that are termed "millennial," but it's a triggering dynamic, and it's a triggering demographic that is going to ensure the success of this. This is not the first Element Hotel that has been built, or is under construction in the metropolitan Atlanta area. I can't emphasize enough for you to understand that MCP, Buckhead America Hospitality, these three individuals whom I have named are in this to own it, to develop it, to operate it for long-term. They have general contractors, they have staff, they have people they depend on that have been involved in hotel after hotel. We have agreed to the components, which Mr. Sudrith mentioned, about the relocation of the dumpster, the way it's positioned on the site plan. It comprises some problematic turning movements on Spring Hill Parkway, which, right as you turn the loop in Spring Hill, there's site distance, there's irregular configuration and positioning of Spring Hill Parkway, such as that's a pretty tight area, and whether we've got site distance or not, if you're backing up in a sanitation vehicle on Spring Hill Parkway, that's not only the optimum of circumstances, that is a big mistake. So we're redesigning that in between now and the mayor and council, which comes up on January the 22nd, and that's part of our stipulations. There's a ditch that actually runs along the Spring Hill Parkway, and it's just that, it's a ditch. So we're gonna curb and gutter that. The city, northern county, has asked for the installation of sidewalk. It would be a sidewalk connecting to nowhere at the moment, so that's not being requested. You have a handout that makes reference to, as Mr. Sudrith did, signage, and we have a stipulation letter that references signage. I have a 35-page document that's the overall schematic plan for the Element Hotel, which staff got today. So we're not asking that you act on that, we're not asking for any variances with respect to the signage located therein. If we end up amending or tweaking the site plan, then that'll be an issue that's before the mayor and council, but we're not asking for anything specific. And as Mr. Sudrith so eloquently stated, if you look favorably towards the site plan, if there's any signage shown on the renderings, elevations that you have, we're not asking that you approve anything specific with respect to signage. Architecture, we think, is stunning. It's a modernistic type of style. I've been in one of these Element Hotels, and they are highly amenitized. The rents are commensurate with the demographic that we're targeting, and it's a suites hotel, not an extended stay, is a big difference. It's a suites, all suites hotel, which is important, because it gives the traveling public the opportunity to have more than just a bed and a room, but gives an opportunity to have separate living space within that room and that space. Our target, in terms of the actual people, are gonna be executives that are training at Home Depot headquarters. It's going to be people that have business at SunTrust, or the Battery, or the Galleria, or Cumberland Mall. It's gonna be corporate training situations, for instance, perhaps even being held in another hotel that comes here, or vice versa. We are asking for contemporaneous or concurrent variance on parking issues, and the agreement for that is empirically speaking, and one of the Mr. Patels I have with me tonight can tell you, that empirically, if you provide, and we are, as a condition of zoning, regularly scheduled shuttle services to SunTrust, the Galleria, and Cumberland, as well as other hotels who may have seminars or conferences, that's regularly scheduled, as in on the hour during regular business hours. We also luckily own, manage, operate, and control the hotel next door. There's ample parking there, so we will have, and have agreed, as a condition of zoning, to submit a reciprocal parking easement agreement, and my owner has talked with himself, and the two, since they're the same people, have agreed to the reciprocal parking easement. Plus, you have a prevalent use of, now of Lyft, of Uber, and these other rideshare programs, and as you know, there, believe it or not, is a Cumberland Circulator, which is a bus service that serves the Cumberland core, all four quadrants of this intersection. It's a little known about, it's a little used, but it is funded, it's operational, it's up, and it is running as well. We have agreed to everything that the fire marshal has asked us to do, which is providing a turning model for the fire apparatus vehicles, so to ensure maneuverability, both on Spring Hill and interior to the site. The building itself, the hotel building, is by code, has to be sprinkled. The structured parking, which is underneath, not as in subterranean, but underneath as in below, the hotel itself, will also have to be sprinkled, as well as the hotel, and we've agreed, because I don't think we have any choice other than to, compliance with International Fire Code 510, which is rather new, and what it does is provide emergency radio communications to all manner of public safety, public service, in terms of emergencies. For any building that's over 10,000 square feet, so that will come into play as well. Your city engineer, when we met with him, other members of your development staff, professional staff, is asking for a hydrology study, a conceptual hydrology study. Our engineers are working on that, will present it to staff at least 10 days before the mayor and city council hearing. So the mayor and city council will have an understanding of the workings of that, and the city engineer will be able to actually develop protocols and also develop an analysis once he examines this conceptual preliminary hydrology. Detention with a site like this, that's small, there's only one option for detention. It's more expensive, the safe, excuse me, the water quality components of it are expensive, but it's gonna be a vault that'll be underground, and one of the conditions, this is very important, is the city has to have, it's gonna be built to the city's design and detailed specification, so the city engineer, public works director, have to have access to that. So I know this sounds ridiculous, that we would even say this, but we've agreed that the underground detention will be accessible in its totality, in terms of city's access to that. We do have a circumstance in here where we have stipulated, and I think it probably coincides with your staff's stipulations, that the community development director, which presently is Mr. Sudrith, has the ability to make minor modifications during the plan review process. Often, plans are tweaked in one way or the other. There's gonna be some tweaking between now and the mayor and council on January the 22nd. I know that, but it gives him the ability afterwards, once full engineering on the site is done. And it's a small track, it's constrained in many fashions, the topo really drops on this. If you're familiar with the Emerson site, which is next door, it's a significant drop from Spring, going back downs towards Spring Hill and back towards I-285. So in conclusion, your staff has recommended approval, we're in conformity with the policy and intent of the LCI comp plan, the Regional Activity Center, with no opposition that we've been able to discern from members of the public and the support of your staff. So, Mr. Chairman, with that being said, I'm available to respond to any questions, and we do ask that you follow your staff's recommendation, that you, as a planning commissioner, recommend that the application be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Sams. At this time, we'd like to open the floor for questions for the applicant.
Yeah, Mr. Sams, you did a great job of explaining the shuttle services that are gonna be available to the various different businesses and
Yes, sir.
... commercial properties in the area. You also talked about the circulator that could be available to help reduce any traffic impact. With that being said, I think there was an impact study done.
Yes, sir.
Do we have an estimate as to what the number of trips that will be circulating through, in particular, the intersection at Spring Road and Cumberland? Do we have an idea on a daily basis? What that is gonna be?
Short answer, no. Explanation for that is, it's off-peak, or it's not concentrated AMP and peak hours, just because of the very nature of the traveling public, number one. Number two, although we hope to be 95% occupied at all times, there's really no way to gauge that, it's such a seasonal. Well, actually, no, it's an event-driven thing now, not a seasonal thing for hotels, particularly with the economic engine that SunTrust and the Battery have turned out to be. So I don't have anything with specificity on that issue, but we can say with confidence, and we've got an impact study that talks about traffic, inherent traffic growth over a period of time. This will not adversely affect AMP and peak hours, and turning movements, and conflicting, or potential conflicting traffic movements at that signalized intersection.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Mr. Sams? Over here?
Mr. Bartlett.
Oh, I didn't see. Okay.
Sorry.
I'd already told, yeah, I'm sorry.
This partial backs up to Emerson Center.
Yes, sir.
We have grand hopes for Emerson Center, and along the We have grand hopes for Emerson Center, and along the note about parking, or the traffic issue, I think, I think it's possibly missing some interparcial access with what we hope Emerson Center will be, that access to Spring, and of course, access down, down the street. I would like to see something in effect added about interparcial access. I know there's topography concerns.
There is, there is problematic topo, but we are willing to, to grant, to have interparcial access, as long as the uses are not inconsistent. And I think the way the LCI plan study, that's not gonna be a problem. I will say this, that tract is currently controlled by an individual that, through bankruptcy court, had an option to purchase that for a certain amount under bankruptcy order, has exercised that option for $9.2 million, and presently owns and operates that. My clients and, and this individual have had conversations going back to at least five years ago. Interparcial access is one of them, complementary utilization of the property is another, so we're willing to do it if we can get them to be, or him to be willing to do that as well. Our plans don't show it because it would be presumptuous to show something we don't have an agreement for yet.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Monroe?
Mr. Sams, has Buckhead Hospitality completed a hotel feasibility study? And if so, if they haven't, are they planning on completing one? Is that how they landed on this brand instead of others?
They, they have an option of several different brands under Marriott, because of the geographical, I don't know if it's a license or what it's called. May I ask Mr. Patel?
As agreement.
Yeah, may I ask Mr. Patel to come up here?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
This is Chief Operating Officer of Buckhead America Hospitality and MCP.
Good evening, Mr. Patel.
How are you? So, the agreement with Marriott, it's a 20-year franchise agreement.
And you've executed that agreement already?
Correct.
For this brand?
Correct.
I was asking about a hotel feasibility study. Have you completed that?
We have not done a feasibility study because we've been in this business for long enough to understand what the market needs. And the reason we chose this brand is, the last development, what we would compete with is the Homewood Suites on Cobb, and the Residence Inn, and if you're familiar with the market, the Residence Inn is close to 25 years old.
Yes, I know.
And the Homewood Suites has probably been there for about 20 years. And the newest product in this price range that was developed was five years ago, was the Hyatt House. But that's over on the Cumberland side. So, nothing in this vicinity has been developed in the last 25 years in this price segment. So, that's the reasoning why we feel that it'll be very successful.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you, do you think this is gonna be complimentary of your hotel next door? Do you think it'll have an adverse impact on it?
No, it'll be complimentary. The Holiday Express is more of a transient business. One night stays, you know, maximum two nights. This one, we're looking for three to four night stays.
Okay.
And more corporate clientele. Just for example, with Home Depot corporate, you know, they, they look for the upper brands, the Holiday Express being a, not a third tier, but it's no Marriott or Hilton.
Okay. What about your occupancy currently at the Holiday Express?
We run on average about 71% to 72% at 139 rooms.
Do you have an estimated completion date?
If we get approved, we'll, you know, let the architect lose and the engineers lose on the design. We're thinking start, fall, construction, about a 15 to 16-month construction time, so you're looking at maybe early 2021, first quarter.
One more question. There's a couple of different things, and Mr. Sams will probably answer one of them. The one about parking, one of the larger variances, I mean, that I can recall, how many parking spaces are available next door to offset it?
So, we have, we've got 139 rooms, and I believe we have close to 145 spaces. So, our plan was, you know, the employees occupy about 10, so we'll probably have the employees park next door, and that frees up, that leaves the entire 28-plus, 73, I believe, is 103 total for guests.
Okay. And you feel like that's gonna be adequate for the?
More than adequate.
Okay. It's confident. You've been doing this a while, obviously, you're confident with what you're doing.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Thank you.
And you might wanna stay for this, either, either one of you. The other item on here is the reduction of the vegetation from 10% to, the landscape buffer from 10 to 5. And I'm sure that this can be done in a manner that doesn't look like a parking deck and a, I know that's not the goal or intent of what you're trying to do, but how are you gonna dress this up so that it doesn't look like asphalt and concrete?
So, is there any way to put the, if you look to the right side of the site plan, you see a little protrusion, which is?
Which is gone now.
Yeah, there's a little cantilevered out balcony, and each one of those balconies has trees, planter boxes that are large enough to plant 10 to 15-foot trees, which is one of the ways. And then the parking lot that's above, along the express parking lot side, will plant a lot of trees that will give some green space. And then where the canopy, where the drive under canopy is, and it's not shown in the site plan, but there's, there'll be a lot of greenery just adjacent to the building itself.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Patel. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sams. All right. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone that'd like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. If you do, come forward, speak one at a time, and please direct all your comments to the board. Okay. Let the record show that there's several in attendance, no one wanting to speak on this application. All right, in the absence of any more discussion, do we have a motion on this item? Is there any? Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the rezoning from O-N-I to T-S conditional, construction of a new hotel.
We have a motion to approve, Mr. Bartlett. We have a second for Mr. Monroe. Please vote. Your application is approved, 7-0. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Merry Christmas to all you guys.
Merry Christmas, Mr. Sams. All right, the next item on the agenda is 2018-512. This is zoning request Z18-017, rezoning from R-15 to O-N-I for an office use. This is .88 acre land lot 420, also known as 894 Patmel Road. The applicant, Melba Bush. Mr. Martin, the background, please.
This request is Z18-017. Melba Bush is requesting to rezone 894 Patmel Road from R-15 to O-N-I for use as a, for use as a doctor's office or chiropractic office. She submitted the application November 9th. You guys will hear it tonight, and basically, mayor and council will make the final decision Tuesday, January 22nd. This property is located on the south side of Patmel Road, just west of the intersection with Atlanta Road. It has an R-15 zoning designation. There's a one-story office building that's on that. It's currently vacant. I think it's been vacant for a couple of years. Ms. Bush can give you the info on that. With this request, basically, they're, they're asking to maintain office use and zone it to O-N-I, which is office institutional. The future land use map has property as low-density residential. The surrounding properties to the east, west, south, and north are all low-density residential. If you look at the map, the properties to the north across Patmel are in unincorporated Cobb County, but the county has that as low-density residential as well on their future land use map. So, there is no, no land use change associated with this request. With this request, there are no proposed improvements to the site, so they're not tearing down the building and building a new building. They're proposing to use the existing building and infrastructure that's out there today. This is the location of the, of the office building. Then they have two one-way drives, so you come in on the, on the eastern driveway, and you go all the way around the property, and you exit out on the, on the western driveway. And then they have 12 existing parking spaces out there, which is more than enough for the floor area provided with the building. And these are pictures of the site today. The picture in the left-hand, upper-left-hand corner is a view from Patmel Road. The upper-right-hand corner is behind the property, looking back towards Patmel. The left-hand bottom picture is pretty much a picture from that parking area back towards Wells Circle. And, and then the right-hand bottom picture is a picture from Wells back into the property. These are pictures of the adjacent single-family homes that abut the property, just to give you some context of the development in the area. Community Development is recommending approval of the proposed rezoning from R-15 to O-N-I with two conditions. The first one restricts vehicular access from Wells Circle to the subject property. So, we're not, we're proposing not to allow commercial traffic to be able to access Wells Circle. So, everything has to come in and exit the site through Patmel. And number two is to maintain the 35-undisturbed, 35-foot undisturbed buffer along Wells Circle. So, maintain a nice vegetative buffer from their adjoining residential properties. With that, I'll be happy to answer any, any questions for you.
Rusty, you may want to explain where we came up with 35 feet.
35 feet is the required front setback for the R-15 zoning classification. So, they'll have a nice vegetative buffer along the, the front of the property along Wells Circle, and it'll be a depth equivalent to the front setback for the R-15 zoning district.
So, 35 on the front and the rear, basically, with what? You're taking the front setback?
We're using the front setback to establish the width of that buffer.
Gotcha. Very good. Any questions for Mr. Martin? Mr. Bar?
Yeah, the future land use, the current use is all low-density residential, and we would be changing this to O-I, so it'd be the, kind of an island of O-I in this, in this area. My concern would be that the O-I classification has a, is a very broad category that can allow a wide range of potential things in the future. But at the same time, it's a fairly limited-sized lot, and the practical implications of putting something other than what's on there is pretty limited. Could you help me better understand practically what the limitations are, so that we don't end up with something undesirable that doesn't appropriately fit in that neighborhood?
On the spectrum of zoning districts, commercial zoning districts for the city, the O-I is on, on the least intensive side of the, of the spectrum. You have your limited commercial, then you have your O-I, neighborhood shopping, general commercial, and then your industrial uses. So, O-I in itself is limiting with respect to the amount of permitted uses that are allowed within that zoning district. And those uses are primarily office uses and institutional public, public use, uses and stuff like that. There's no retail, there's no industrial uses, or restaurants, or any, any types of uses like that. It's basically office uses, maybe some financial institutional uses, and possibly a daycare, and then, and for the most part, either laboratories or other stuff like that. But this site in itself is eight tenths of an acre in size. The property itself is pretty limiting. If they were to tear down the existing building and build to the standards of an O-I, that O-I allows, which may be, which right now, the current building height is up to five stories, they would have to accommodate the parking for that, for that use, for that building, which would also lead to providing stormwater management for that site. Due to the size of the site, it, it may not be feasible to have a five-story building and all the parking associated with that, as well as meeting buffer requirements from the adjoining residential neighbors, which would be a 10-foot buffer from, from those neighbors. So, you, you start, when you start adding all those items, you start, that parcel gets smaller and smaller. So, it, the zoning ordinance does a pretty good job of limiting what can go there. And I don't know that I addressed this fully on the front end, but this, this has been a doctor's office for several decades. There is a historical use on the property that's been there for probably as long as all the people in that neighborhood have lived there. So, this is not a residential property that was converted to a commercial property. It's always been commercial. It has commercial infrastructure. Dr. Bush retired, the property's been vacant for several years, so they've lost their legal non-conforming status. So, to be able to continue using the property for commercial use, they've gotta come back before you and get rezoning.
So, if they would've, before he retired, if they would've come and got this, we wouldn't be talking about this today. It would've just?
If they would've come back within a year of the use ending out there, then they would've been able to continue with the, with the permitted use.
Meaning that somebody could have come in and pulled a, a business permit to operate the similar office on that space inside a year of him?
Yes, it would've had to been an office use. They couldn't change use to a retail or something else.
Okay.
It would've had to been an office.
But the property remaining, staying vacant for 12 months kicked, kicked it out of its non-conforming status, right?
Yes, sir.
Fair? Now, we got another question here for you, Rusty.
Rusty, the 35-foot buffer at the back at Wells Road is for the R-15. What's the standard buffer for the O-I on a rear setback?
A standard buffer for, for commercial use against a residential use, if it's under five acres, is 10, 10-foot in width.
On the rear setback, since Wells is the rear?
The, the buffer is only required against property that joins, commercial property that joins a residential property. So, it would've been a 10-foot buffer. So, we're trying to increase that to 35 to maintain what is out there today.
And do you know the age of the house?
I know, Ms. Bush could answer that question for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Rusty? All right, thank you, sir. At this time, we'd like to have Ms. Bush come up and maybe give a, clear up some of our questions about the property. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening and welcome. I don't think I'll do quite as good a job as the attorney did, but I will basically answer any question that you do have, and thank you for reviewing this. My husband was bought this property back in 1972, the latter part of '72, and has been there since '70, well, '70, 1973 through 2000, 2014.
I don't wanna interrupt you, but let the record show I was correct, that it has been my entire life.
(laughing).
Sorry.
And so, my husband, I'm real proud of him. He worked till he was 85 and a half, and he practiced dentistry for 59 years.
Wow.
He loved dentistry, that was his ministry in life. And so, this building is so important that it can go back to serve the community and the- the two, for the city. We want it to represent it properly and for us also. But it's very important that it goes back to service and gives service as he has given it all this time. And, um, so we're, the building itself, I, I think would be great to serve the area and the community. And, uh, so I hope that you will think, think the same thing.
Do you have a, um, a prospective tenant or, or buyer interested in the property?
We have, uh, someone that was interested in it and, um, may still several that might be, so, uh, that is a good thing.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. All right, are there any questions for Ms. Bush? Okay. Thank you very much and thank you for, uh, you and your husband's service to our community. That's awesome. What a great story.
Thank you so very much.
Yes, ma'am.
We're very fortunate, aren't we? They got to work that long.
Yes, ma'am, we are, absolutely. Absolutely.
Merry Christmas.
This is a public hearing. Um, at this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone, uh, in the audience that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and, uh, please sign the sign-in sheet at the podium. Good evening and welcome.
Uh, good evening, Merry Christmas. My name's Randy Jordan and I live on 837 Wells Circle. And my only comment is more of a question is, what would keep them from infringing upon the 35-foot buffer onto Wells Circle, the street I live, which is a dead end and ends at the backside of the Public Works property? For example, this plan sounds good, but is it easy to change that and we get, uh, access onto, from traffic from this facility down the road onto Wells Circle?
So this, this zoning stipulation, if approved by the PNZ and Mayor and Council, would run with the property. So if they wanted to, if the next property owner wanted to tear the building down and, and build something else, they would come through for plan review. We'd review the zoning of the property and see what the stipulations are. And if it prohibited, if it prohibits the access to Wells, they'd be prohibited from doing that unless they came back to Mayor and Council and got a zoning amendment to modify that request. So they would have to come back through the process to get approval.
Through this process again. And so being it's a dead end, it's way up there, very few cars. I very seldom go up there unless I'm walking my dogs. I would miss the variance sign because this has happened before is, you know, you put those variance signs according to, you know, I guess the, the statutes or regulations that determine the placement and the timing of that and so on and so forth, but three people will see it.
Right.
And that's a concern. And I don't know if there's anything that could be done to let people who live on Wells, you know, that this property is like two properties up from the very top. So there may be three houses past it. So nobody will see it. Is there a way we can address that?
Well, the variance process requires public notification by posting signs on the public right-of-way. So since this has access to Patmail and Wells Circle, there should be a sign on both right-of-ways, as well as requires, uh, notification of the contiguous property owners. And they usually either do that through signing the applic-, there's a sheet in the application that says they've been notified by the, by the applicant that there's a variance request, or they send a letter through certified mail and they provide the, the receipt of the, uh, certified mail as proof of sending that letter.
I think I have a, a reasonable understanding of the requirements. However, you may recollect about three years ago, the Habitat for Humanity House that was built just, uh, towards Atlanta Road from this property. Um, the variance sign was up, you know, was put where it was supposed to be put. And, uh, it may have been another one for the two properties on Patmail. It may have been put there, but, um, nobody saw it because it was, you know, kind of hidden.
Yeah, I think those properties are subdivided in the middle, so they only have access to one.
But my point is, is that we, you can put the variance sign according to the city of Smyrna regulations, but three people will see it. And, 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 and then it directly impacts them unless, and I guess through due diligence, we check, you know, regularly when the hearings are had, you know, being had and all that to see if anything's going to impact us. And, you know, that would be great if we all had time to do that. That's my concern is that the, the Dennis Bush Dennis office been there. I've been to, uh, Dr. Bush and I have no real problems for that as long as this isn't a toehold into the changing of the zonings from a low-density, that we start getting a bunch of other stuff and that we don't get traffic on a narrow, dead-end street.
Let me, let me answer that. The reason for support of this is because of its past history. This is not a request of a, trying to change an existing residential house to this. So if somebody else came in off of Patmail and wanted to do that, the circumstances would be different. Um, and from that perspective, um, staff would, would be looking at it from a whole different angle, uh, regarding that. What, what makes this request acceptable is the history of that...
I understand.
Piece of property. I can't give you assurances 100%, sir. You're here tonight for however you found out about it. But I can assure you that staff make sure that if there are conditions such as what is proposed, that they won't be violated on that. And if somebody goes in and starts taking buffer down, regardless of the access, not even addressing the access, once we're aware of that, we will enforce that ordinance and, and that individual then is, is susceptible to enforcement by the city and would have to recompense it, could potentially go to court. That's what our co-compliance, uh, division is for, which also is under the umbrella of the, of Community Development, which is the department that I oversee. So, um, in terms of your notification, I understand your concern, but it's also, in this case, it's a piece of property that has double frontage. I would assume during the time it would be up, that somebody would be driving down Patmail as well and see the sign. But the city does make every effort, um, to make sure people are notified.
Uh, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Thanks for coming. Anybody else? We don't bite, I promise. Okay. All right. Any further discussion or any other questions for staff or the applicant? All right. Then I'd like to, uh, have a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to... 018-017, rezoning from R-15 to O-I for office use with the conditions stipulated by staff.
We have a motion to approve, Ms. Harrington. We have a second, Ms. Lightfoot. Please vote. You know, I was sitting up here while they were, we, we had our pre-meeting. I was, we were discussing this and I was convinced that it had been here my entire life. I'm thrilled to know that you guys have been working over there that long. Makes, maybe my mind's not going completely blank. All right. This, uh, application has been approved, 7-0. Congratulations and, uh, take care. Have a Merry Christmas. All right. The next item on the agenda is item 2018-513. Uh, this is zoning request Z18-018. And by virtue of all the participation we've had tonight, I think everyone came out to hear the, uh, the code amendment changes at the end of the meeting. Just sorry. This is rezoning from R-15 to R-15 conditional for three residential lots. This is 1.136 acres, land lot 335, uh, 572 North Thomas Lane. Mr. Patel is the app.
All right. Uh, this zoning request is going to tr-, travel on the same path as the previous two requests. You guys will hear it, make a recommendation, and Mayor and Council will act on it on the January 22nd, uh, meeting. The subject property is located at the intersection of, uh, North Cooper Lake Road and Thomas Lane. It's just over an acre in size. Um, it has an existing one-story, uh, single-family home. That single-family home, I, I believe has been renovated here recently and, uh, updated. The applicant is proposing to change zoning from R-15 to R-15 conditional. So there is not a change in the zoning classification with it, for, with what it's in. It's merely a change from the zoning district to a site plan-specific, uh, zoning classification that allows it to deal with, um, a lot size issue on Lot 1 and a setback issue for the, for the existing single-family home. With this request, they are proposing to keep the existing single-family home and then build two new single-family homes on either side of that with, with the associated, uh, uh, stormwater management facility. As you can see, the subject property is zone R-15 on the map and everything to the north, uh, east, south, and west is all R-15 as well. The subject property, uh, is shown as low-density residential. Uh, the proposed density with the three lots is 2.6 units per acre, which is within the lo-, low-density residential, uh, land use classification. And, uh, as you can see, everything to the north, east, south, and west is low-density as well. So there will be no change in the, in the future land use map. Here's the proposed site plan. Uh, Lot 1 is at the corner of North Cooper Lake Road and Thomas Lane. Lot 2 is a lot with the existing home. And, uh, Lot 3 is just to the, is adjoining to the east. Uh, Lot 1 is approximately 10,507 square feet in size. Lot 2 is 15,000 square feet and Lot 3 is 15,000 square feet. With this request, they are proposing to maintain the zoning setbacks for the R-15, uh, zoning district, except for the front setback for Lot 8. Uh, or, I mean, Lot 2 will be 28 feet, uh, as opposed to 35. And that's just because the existing home currently encroaches at that distance. Here's the proposed stormwater management facility and the, and access to it. And then they're proposing five-foot sidewalk, two-foot grass buffer. As I stated before, there are two variances that are driving this proposed, uh, rezoning. Uh, the first one is to reduce the lot size for Lot 1 from 15,000 square feet down to 10,507 square feet. And the second variance being reducing the front setback for Lot 2 from 35 feet to 28 feet. The applicant did submit a subdivision plot originally with the Community Development Department. That plot met all the requirements of the R-15 zoning district. And... They met the lot width standards for the lot width along North Thomas Lane, which was a minimum 85-foot lot width, as well as having 15,000 square feet per each lot, excluding the, uh, the detention facility. But to achieve that, the lots sort of had little dog legs that went all the way back to that, that northern portion of the site from Lot 1 and everything back there. Staff was concerned that this was going to create a, a property maintenance issue and create ownership conflicts and stuff like that in the future. So we asked applicant to come back in, request the, uh, rezoning to a site plan-specific zoning and we, and, and request a variance for that Lot 1, uh, lot size reduction. So this is, this is the, the end product after the discussion with staff and the applicant regarding, you know, trying to clean up, clean up the issues. Here's some of the proposed elevations for the houses that they're going to build. These are just giving you ideas of, of, of what they're, what they're proposing to build. And then this is the picture of the site. The upper-left hand is the corner of North Cooper Lake and To-, North Thomas. Uh, the upper right is the existing house and then the bottom picture is the, is Lot 3 in the detention facility area. These are pictures of adjoining and adjacent properties, um, across North Thomas and, and North Cooper Lake. Community Development has, uh, Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from R-15 to R-15 conditional for the three lots, uh, with the following conditions for, that are standard conditions from Section 1201 that deal with composition of the home, the protective covenants, stormwater management, underground utilities, uh, traffic improvements, burning of debris and, uh, landscape requirements. Special conditions, uh, number 11 deals with the, with the lot setbacks that we discussed earlier. 12 deals with the, uh, minimum lot size for Lot 1 and lots 2 and 3. Number 13 establishes a minimum driveway length of 22 feet. 14 requires a sidewalk along, uh, both North Cooper Lake...
Rusty, before you go on, just for clarification.
It's air, it's an error.
There's an error and I want to get that in the record, that, that that lead-in is, is incorrect. It's really for the three lots, um, on that. It's correct in the report. It's in the correct in that presentation.
Number 14 requires a five-foot setback, or a five-foot sidewalk along North Cooper Lake and, uh, North Thomas Lane. Uh, 15 is a five-foot right-of-way dedication along North Thomas Lane. 16 requires a seven-foot, uh, right-of-way dedication along North Cooper Lake Road. Uh, 17 prohibits a driveway location on North, uh, Cooper Lake. And 18 require, uh, requires the driveway location for Lot 1 to be a minimum 50 feet, uh, from North, uh, Cooper Lake intersection along To-, North Thomas Lane. 19 requires trees to be saved and protected during the land disturbance pro-, process. Uh, 20 requires the stormwater management to be located on a, on a separate lot. 21 ties the zoning to the site plan submitted and 22 ties it to the building elevation submitted. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So the, the lead-in that Mr. Sudrith referenced was, this is 1.136 acres and three lots.
Yes, for 2.6 density and for three lots.
Yeah, just want to be clear. Yes.
It's R-15 conditional.
All right. Uh, any questions for Mr. Martin? Mr. Bartlett?
Just real quick, uh, conditions 15 and 16 say that there's additional right-of-way being dedicated, but the proposed building setbacks taken from the existing right-of-way.
Existing, yes. We're not going to punish them for dedicating property to the city during the zoning process.
Any other questions for Mr. Martin? Mr. Campa?
Just to clarify, two of the lots meet the R-15, 15,000 square feet.
Right.
So we're just talking about one lot at 10,500 and most of the, I mean, there's only two minor adjustments to the setback and to the side setback. Is that basically it?
Yes, basically two of the lots meet the requirements of the R-15 classification. All the lots are proposed, except for the front setback, Lot 2, are proposed to meet the R-15 zoning setback requirements. Lot 1 could meet the R-15 standards if they drew it the way that they, they originally proposed.
And that's because your detention facility's like 8,000 square feet or something like that?
Right. Right. I mean, they could incorporate some of that lot into another, yeah, I mean,
They could tear down the house.
They've already provided, they've already provided proof that they can meet the, the zoning standards.
Okay. Any other questions?
And just for the rec- staff isn't, staff encouraged this rezoning to take place because we think it ends up with more appropriate lots, but it doesn't end up with more lots that are technically allowed that would meet all the requirements. I just feel it's better all the way around to have them squared up the way that they currently are and, and give them a variance on the lot that needs to, needs to get it than to have sort of gerrymandered lots that potentially create maintenance issues, uh, as well as ownership. It, it, I think this is just a better approach. So staff is the one that has encouraged this rezoning to occur.
Okay.
Yes, this is not going to establish precedent for anything else in the future as far as increasing density or anything like this, or maintaining an R fifteen zoning classification.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Martin. At this time, we'd like to ask Mr. Patel to come forward and, uh, tell us a little bit about the plan or Mr. Patel's representation. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Mark Lee. I'm with Paul Lee Consulting Engineering. My father, some of you may know, uh, started our company back in seventy-three here in Smyrna. We stayed in Smyrna forever, but, uh, unfortunately times got hard and we got, we're out in Powder Springs now. But, uh, anyway, uh, Rusty did a fabulous job describing everything. Um, a- as always, the developers come to me and they want ten pounds in a two-pound bag and they ask y'all for the same thing, right? And, uh, but we try to give it to them, but we just try to tell them that realism is you got to stay with it. When, when we presented the first, uh, presentation of the three lots, um, there were some very wicked-looking lines that, uh, allowed us to get the R fifteen, but it, it was, I agreed with, uh, Ken dramatically. It was, it was very funky-looking. And, uh, we decided that, uh, uh, this would be a much better approach. It would look more uniform, much easier to maintain and take care of. Uh, and so we were in support of, of going through this process. Uh, it will, it just makes everything look better and, and, and gives a better presentation. So, um, detention-wise, uh, if you kind of look at the layout, everything is flowing this direction. Uh, it all show, flows in a nice sheet flow, uh, and, you know, there's no real concentrated reels or anything like that. So our proposed detention is going to u- utilize a level spreader, which spreads our concentrated flow back out to a nice level sheet flow back to our neighbor as they are receiving it now. So we've already considered that in our hydraulic approach, uh, that we want to take care of our neighbors and make sure that there's no damage to their property with, uh, increased velocities due to concentrated flows. But, uh, anyway, I think Rusty did a great job. I don't think there's anything else that you'd like to present. Uh, any questions? Be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Lee?
Are these, uh, pre-sales or spec houses?
They're spec homes. Yes, they will be spec homes.
What's the price range?
Mr. Patel, why don't you come up here and maybe you can answer a couple of these questions for us?
Those are questions I don't know.
We may have another question for you too, Mr. Lee. It's not, not often we get the engineers up here at, at the zoning hearing, so do appreciate you coming. Mr. Patel, could you answer the question, please?
Yes, sir.
About the pricing of the product?
Uh, prices are like around four hundred thousand?
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Patel? No, all right, thank you, Mr. Patel. Mr. Lee, uh, if, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Harrington, she's sitting too close to me, I couldn't see her. Mr. Patel, hang on a second.
Mr. Patel, will there be any additional renovations to the existing home upgrades? Um, is it owner-occupied still?
We already did about a hundred and ten thousand dollar renovation.
And those pictures that we saw reflect the renovations?
Yes.
How many square feet is that house again?
Uh, thirty-one hundred square feet.
All right, thank you.
Two other questions that I know should be coming up up here. Uh, one, the, uh, the detention facility or the water quality facility, is it going to be above ground? Um, maintenance will not be an issue for that type of facility.
Yeah, it'll be above ground. We're going to use, um, uh, an underground infiltration filter, uh, but we're also going to have the, all the above with a retaining wall that holds the water, lets it out into what we call a, a trap or a level spreader area where it, it has seeping ag- again, uh, that takes in any, it won't sit there in, in a pool. Once it finishes topping the level spreader, it'll then seep in and be done.
Okay. All right, and, um, any other questions for Mr. Lee? The, um, in your experience in this, this area of Smyrna, what, if they were to tear that house down and put up and do a, um, full development there, how many lots, based on the square footage they have there, including an detention facility, do you believe they'd be able to achieve?
There would only be three period, there's.
Period?
We can't get, with R fifteen, uh, it's, it's restricted to three.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
That's the only frontage, to, to get the frontage requirements for each with the setbacks, it, it just won't yield anymore.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. Any other questions? Sorry, I need to cut him off. Good. All right. All right, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone that'd like to come forward, speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Please come forward, uh, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Rich. I live at seven-eleven North Thomas Lane, which adj- is directly adjacent to the property. Uh, since Mr. Patel was doing the remodel on the, uh, five-seventy-two house, uh, he disturbed a lot of trees and bushes and stuff along the property line from where the vacant lot is to the house on five-seventy-two. Well, in that process, he took away the brush and stuff that kept the water from running down onto my property. My house was built in nineteen seventy-five and to make everyone aware, that house, five-seventy-two, is my wife's mother's former house and the house that we live in, her dad built in nineteen seventy-five. Never had a flooding issue until he took all these bushes and trees and stuff out. My basement flooded right after, uh, I had painted my garage floor, had to redo that. My backyard now has a trench in it from the runoff, uh, that I've lost probably seven, eight hundred dollars' worth of grass seed and, and hay and stuff like that. And I'm not opposed to the man building on these properties. I'm opposed to him not taking care of the property below him.
I understand.
Uh, you know, I just want to make sure that I'm not further impacted, uh, by what he does.
Right, the good, the good news is by this process, he's going to spend a lot of money ensuring that your property is protected and it gives the city the ability to go out and, uh, verify in the field that these things are going in. And he's working with, you know, an engineer that's supposed to ensure to protect your property as well.
No, the dam- the, a lot of damage has already been done to my property.
I understand. I understand, it's unfortunate.
If I can add, um, you, you were, because it was a renovation, certain things weren't triggered as a result because it was just a renovation.
Correct, and, and, and I spoke with Eric about this and they've been out to my property many times.
But because this now becomes a subdivision and it is triggering those other ordinances and as Mr. Lee said, um, those items will be checked as part of our plan review process to make sure that what is being proposed is indeed adequate to meet those requirements, um, on that. Um, so, um, I'm, I can't, you know, I'm not trying to diminish by any stretch of the imagination what has already occurred, but this does trigger things that weren't triggered previously just because it was a renovation. So in that regard, I think you're actually better protected with this development.
Like I said, I'm not opposed to the development, I'm not. You know, I, I hope the houses don't engulf the neighborhood. I hope they're, you know, more correspondent with what's in the neighborhood now.
Yeah.
Uh, but, you know, I'm not opposed to him building. I'm just opposed to, you know, any more damage to my property that's already been done.
Well, I, I appreciate you bringing it to, to my attention and obviously when, um, it goes through plan review to, to get permits, um, we'll make sure that the, um, city engineers department verifies everything, just double-checks it one more time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming out, Mr. Rich. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, I'm Mitch Huffman, I'm at six sixty-nine Fox Cliff Court, um, close to the, the property in question. And I come really out of a, a concern for the area in general. Uh, been living in that, uh, neighborhood for ten years now and have seen quite a bit of change. Have seen six acres go to, to very small, lot-sized houses. You've seen development right to the, next to the park come in. And that area just to the north of this is the only outlet is just north for all residents inside that area, all have to go out that one way. So that area has really increased over time. And I, I, I really am concerned that this may set a precedence that says, you know, why, why don't I do this too and go ahead and subdivide mine and, and go ahead and put another house on there and let's all do this and then suddenly what, what is a relatively standard neighborhood now becomes just a hodgepodge, um, of, of houses and, and the looks of the houses and the lot sizes of the houses. Um, now also, I, I guess, uh, Mr. Patel bought this house this year, um, and, uh, modified the house and now, uh, is characterized as seven bedrooms and four baths and a condo home. And I'm not sure what that means and not sure what it means for our area, but it sounds to me like a lot more residents on that one-point-one-whatever-size, uh, acre land, which is somewhat similar to other plots in that, in that area. Uh, I noticed the, the house, the, the drawing on the flat shows it as a one, as a ranch with a basement, but, uh, it doesn't really give that, that feel of, of seven bedrooms and four baths. Um, so mainly just wanted to express concern for the general area past that Reed Road and, and North Cooper Lake Road area. Uh, and, uh, and I'll ask, you know, what, what does this do for the residents? Does, does this now allow me to do the same thing for, for my point-six acre lot, you know? Uh, and, and does it provide a selling point for me as well for somebody to come and develop my property?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Huffman. Any other, um, citizens that'd like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application? You know, one thing I will say about these little developments like this, these are, these are some of the most, um, difficult things we do because they have a real impact on the immediate people there. Um, and it's obvious, the, the people next door, uh, those guys have to live through, um, uh, this type of work. Um, and it's, it's not an easy task to protect your neighbor downstream. It, it's not, but it's, it's a, it's a real part of, um, your responsibility, uh, to take care of them. And, um, I don't know how this is going to go this evening, but, uh, I think we've heard enough comments to make sure that we are, uh, taking care of our neighbors next door. And, and then on a speculative, uh, you know, just nature or comment, um, making new houses and old houses fit together is, um, it's probably a little bit of art and a little bit of science. You know, you, you don't want to have any outliers, um, and, and making it fit in a neighborhood that's existing that's as old as this neighborhood is not a very easy thing to do. Um, so we do appreciate you guys coming out and speaking. And, uh, I'd like to see if there's any other discussion on Z one eight dash zero one eight. No? All right, then I would like to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, on zero one eight, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, Mr. Rice. Do we have a second? For those of you that didn't hear me earlier, he had a hole in one this week. We have a second, Mr. Bartlet? All right. Um, I want to get the Jeopardy track for this part of our show. That'd be a copyright infringement or... Sorry, the motion's approved, seven-zero. All right, good luck with your project. And take care of your neighbors for sure. Caitlin, I want so bad to make them all stay, but, anyway. All right, um, the next item on the agenda is item two zero one eight dash five one four. This is, um, public hearing for the code amendment to the zoning ordinance to update Section nine oh eight in regards to the loading space requirements for the City of Smyrna. Now, going to get it right. It's Caitlin Crowe now, right?
It is.
Uh, wow. That's what it says on my paperwork down here at least, just kidding.
Thank you for the accurate representation, Mr. Amendment this evening. This is the loading berth update. So we are going to be amending Section nine oh eight of the zoning ordinance and due to the fact that we found some typing errors that need to update, uh, to reflect the current standards and also to prevent overlapping requirements. So during our review of the ordinance, we found that one of the tables did not show the accurate representation of what we use today. So you can see in the second line there, talks about forty thousand to a hundred thousand square feet. Where it's the line below is a hundred thousand to a hundred and sixty thousand square feet. That means that for a hundred thousand square feet, you could either have two or three required berths. And so we needed to rectify that to make sure there was no confusion. So we have updated all of the typing in this specific table. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Any questions from Miss Crowe? All right, easy fellows. All right, this is a public hearing. We'd like to ask if there's anyone that'd like to speak in favor of or opposition to, uh, this code amendment change.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the code amendment Section nine oh eight in regards to the loading space requirements.
Uh, we got a motion, Mr. Campo. Um, a second, Mr. Monroe. All in favor, please vote. I'll handle it later.
Going to be quick.
Yeah, you might want to just stay there, Caitlin. All right, next item on the agenda is, uh, I, uh, item two zero one eight dash five one five. This is public hearing for code amendment to the zoning ordinance to update the building permit requirements for the City of Smyrna.
All right. It said it will be the building permit updates. This will be amending Sections thirteen oh four, thirteen oh five, and thirteen oh six of the zoning ordinance. While we were reviewing the ordinance, we found several discrepancies between how the ordinance currently reads and how it's being implemented through the community development department. So the first one is probably the most important. Um, we are determining, we are, um, excuse me, we are separating the standalone permits. So residential standalone permits, which are plumbing, electrical, and mechanical, excluding structural, will not require plans unless requested by the chief building official. And we also updated it that any building permit will be, um, need to have complete plans. We got rid of the fifteen thousand dollar requirement since many structural items such as decks um, or any sheds or such, um, even though they may be under fifteen thousand, we still need to make sure they are structurally sound. And then at the end there, we talked about how the chief building official is authorized to waive the submission of plans if it is found that the nature of the work applied for is not necessary to obtain compliance with the current building code. This is just in case there is something very minor that would usually trigger the, um, plans, but that's not necessary. We are also going to be clarifying the language. So instead of saying that it's substantially completed, we are now saying- So, instead of saying that it's substantially completed, we are now saying that if the work described in the building permit has not been inspected within six months of the date of issuance, it will expire. This is how we have been doing the expirations, but there's no way to say what substantially completed is. We're just clarifying to make sure it's been inspected. And then the last is we are getting rid of the non-conforming uses on certificates of occupancy. Usually, any non-conforming uses are taken care of during the rezoning or the permitting process prior to any certificates of occupancy being issued. Thus, this makes it null. We also do not currently put those on any certificates of occupancy. With that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Crowe?
Question.
I have a question. Can we add zoning chairman to the item 1304?
I'll leave that to Mr. Sudrath.
Sorry, I had to try. Can we get a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing at this time. We'd like to ask if there's anyone that would like to come and speak in favor of or opposition to this zoning code amendment. Okay, let the record show there are none. Can we get a motion?
Motion to approve code amendment to the zoning ordinance to update the building permit requirements to the City of Smyrna.
Motion to approve, Mr. Campo. Second, Mr. Monroe. It's okay. All in favor, please vote. The amendment's approved, 7-0. The next item on the agenda is 2018-516. This is Public Hearing for Code Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Add New Fencing Section in the City of Smyrna.
All right. About fencing. So, we will be amending Sections 501 and 503 of the zoning ordinance. The current regulations for fencing do not take into account double frontage lots. Currently, we treat them similar to corner lots. They do not have their own section. And the current regulations for corner lots are inadequate and conflict with the use of the property, which cause excessive variances to increase the height of the fence along the street side frontage, or they also forego that area if they choose to do that. So, they either get privacy or lack of their property. And then, last but not least, fencing is also currently grouped into accessory structures, which is an inappropriate category for it currently. So, this image here is what is currently used to give out to the public to talk about fencing. As you can see, it is a corner lot. So, this green section here can be up to four feet. So, this is the front and the side yard. And then this blue section here is what's allowed to be eight feet. So, what we are proposing is just to add this section here, this will be allowed to be six feet. This allows them both privacy as well as the full use of their lot. So, how we are going to do this is to remove the fencing regulation from where it is currently and to create a new section in 503. So, the first one here, the no fence shall be more than eight feet in height or be constructed in a public right-of-way is currently in the ordinance. And then, within any front yard in all zoning districts, no chain link or similar woven wire fence shall be permitted. However, within a front yard in the aforementioned districts, a decorative or ornamental rail, split rail, picket, opaque, basket weave, or similar fence constructed of wooden materials may be permitted, provided that said fence does not exceed four feet in height. Columns comprised of brick, stone, or similar material may be placed between fence sections in the front yard, but still cannot exceed four feet in height. Decorative wrought iron shall also be permitted, provided that said fence does not exceed four feet in height. In all cases, the finished side of the fence shall be to the exterior. All of that with the exception of that very last sentence is already currently in the ordinance. With the finished side, we are just trying to make it look a little bit nicer in each neighborhood. We are also adding about double frontage. So, double frontage lots shall be allowed wooden and wrought iron fences of ornamental or decorative nature to be within the rear yard at a maximum of six feet in height. Rear yard here shall mean the yard to which the main structure does not face. And we're also including corner lots. So, corner lots shall be allowed wooden or wrought iron fences of ornamental or decorative nature along the side of property adjacent to the road at a maximum of six feet in height. I do want to make sure you see that we are not allowing any chain link or anything like that in this area. It will still look nice. So, with this new section, we're also going to be adding some images. We have found that images really help people understand, especially with fencing, since there are so many questions about it. So, we will have an interior lot. This is the standard lot to make sure that they see the four feet and eight feet maximums. The double frontage lots, so you can see the back one will now have six feet maximum in the rear yard. And then two corner lots. We have the two images to show, the one on the left, that's kind of the standard corner lot, and the one on the right. Oftentimes with corner lots, the houses tend to face that corner, so we want to make sure we kind of get all the questions prior to them coming up so they can see what their house looks like. And with that, I can answer any questions.
And so, chain link would not be allowed in any of these situations?
Not in the six feet.
Okay.
So, it would still be allowed in the eight feet behind the [inaudible].
Okay. All right, very good. All right, any questions for Ms. Crowe? Hold on. Easy, easy, Mr. Campo. Nobody touch the buzzer. All right, this is a public hearing. We'd like to ask if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to these code amendment changes. We had a motion, Mr. Campo, to approve. Motion, Mr. Campo. Second, Ms. Harrington, please vote. It's denied, 7-0. I'm kidding. It's 7-0, it is approved. Sorry. All right. Item 2018-517, this is Public Hearing for the Code Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Add Guest Parking for Townhome and Condominium Communities.
Hey, don't worry, that was the longest one.
Very good. Ms. Crowe, the background.
Of guest parking. So, this is amending Section 906 of the zoning ordinance. Currently, there's not a parking requirement for guest parking in townhome and condominium communities, but that's rather handled during rezoning, so we want to go ahead and put in as a requirement. And then, our concern is if guest parking isn't regulated, then guests may have to park on streets, which can block emergency services and sanitation vehicles and can cause hazards to these new communities. So, we are proposing to add the guest parking requirement specifically for townhome and condominium communities. This will be one space per 25% of the total units. And if there's any questions, I can answer them.
Mr. By.
Yeah, how will this be impact existing townhomes? Is this just for new, or is it for everything?
This will be for new, however, this has been, this has been used during rezonings in previous cases. So, we kind of took this from what has been the standard and just in putting into the ordinance, but it's not going to...
So, the recent townhomes that have been approved have already met this standard?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions? Okay. This is a public hearing. We'd like to ask if there's anyone that would like to come and speak in favor of or opposition to this code amendment change? Okay. Let the record show there are none. And a motion, Mr. Rice. It's approved, 7-0. The next item on the agenda is 2018-518. This is Code Amendment to the City's Code of Ordinances to Repeal Appendixes FGHNI, City of Smyrna.
All right.
Caitlin Crowe.
So, yes, we are [inaudible] eye of the Code of Ordinances. So, keep in mind, these are not currently in the zoning code. So, they have several areas of conflict with Section 717, which is the corridor design districts, which is what encompasses the appendices, or what is in addition to. And this can confuse staff as well as members of the development community. So, we're setting the precedent to that by repealing the appendices, we'll try and be keeping the zoning code within the zoning ordinance to keep it all cohesive. So, a couple of examples of the conflict would be in Appendix F, which is South Atlanta Road. That's actually one of the things we're changing, is it's not currently known as South Atlanta Road within Smyrna. But, as you can see in the table, Section 717 talks about wall-mounted signage shall not exceed 40 square feet, whereas in the appendix for the same side, it shall not exceed 48 square feet. In Appendix G, which is Spring Road, the parking requirements for the appropriate zoning district apply unless the owner is renovating a structure built before 1945. This is in 717. The cohesive, or the appendix that's with it does not even talk about when the structure can be renovated. Appendix H is South Cobb Drive, talks about the minimum side yard is 20 feet in Section 717, whereas in the Appendix H, the minimum is 10 feet. And then lastly, Appendix I, which is Wendy Hill Road, the architectural style is not mentioned in 717, whereas in Appendix I, it does say that needs to be typical of Cobb County, 1845 to 1940. I just selected, I just selected one of each, but in digging through the two differences, there are tens of each for all of the appendices, so there are quite a few. So, with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Crowe? All right, this is a public hearing. We'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the code amendment. Okay. Cutting a motion, Mr. Campo. A second, Ms. Lightfoot. All in favor? Approved, 7-0. The next item on the agenda is 2018-519. This is Code Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Update Section 717. Ms. Crowe.
All right. So, we've made it to amending Section 717, which is, as you can see, the corridor design districts. So, this relates back to the last one of repealing the appendices. While we were looking through, we did find many discrepancies, and due to that, we did need to make a couple of updates to Section 717 to bring it in line with what's currently enforced. But most importantly, when the sign ordinance was passed in 2005, it trumped all other sign regulations. So, since that came after Section 717, we did need to remove any of the sign ordinances in Section 717 and relate it purely back to the sign ordinance. And then, while we were doing this, we also fixed just a couple of typing errors. So, one of the errors that we did change was for the South Cobb Drive access. Instead of saying it needs to be three acres, it is just one acre. Once again, this is just one of many that we did update. Then we needed to relocate the signage section. We did leave one line in there where it says, "Regulations of Chapter 82, signs under the Code of Ordinances apply." That way, if anyone does see and asks about signs, they know where to look. And then we also updated the table with all of the changes we had made. The table is at the end of Section 717. So, on here, as you can see, it's no longer South Atlanta Road. We changed that to get rid of the south. And then we did update any of the typing errors we found. With that, I can answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Crowe? Okay. This is a public hearing. We'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this code amendment modification? Please, come now. All right. Discussion? All right. I would like to entertain a motion. Mr. Campo. Second, Ms. Harrington. Motion to approve, Mr. Campo. Second, Ms. Harrington. All in favor, please vote. That final item was approved, 7-0. And by my count, Ms. Crowe had a dominant night. She scored 42 to nothing. Mr. Martin came in a close second at 14 nothing, and Mr. Sudrath, you're going to have to pick up your game. Only presenting one time, you are in third place, sir. All right. Any further discussion tonight, or we want to jump on and approve the minutes of the meeting from the November 12, 2018, meeting? Are there any changes that need to be made at this time? And a motion to approve? I thought I had Ms., I got Ms. Lightfoot. And a second, Mr. Monroe. Don't make that your business. That's awesome. You know, Ms. Lightfoot, trying to participate and just kept getting shut down earlier. Mr. Monroe, our most active board member tonight. Can we get a vote on the minutes, please? And the minutes are approved, 7-0. Would like to say fantastic job, Ms. Crowe. You did excellent, very entertaining. Anything else? This is the end of the year, Ken. It's your moment.
I just wanted to let you know that as of six weeks ago, we are full-staffed. We've hired a new building inspector as well as a lead marshal. So, we are back to 15 full-time people in the community development, and all sections are churning away now.
Excellent.
And my second comment is, I hope you all have a Merry Christmas.
Absolutely. Merry Christmas. This meeting is adjourned at 7:46 PM.